Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, A one, discuss the physical condition of that employee, discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health, rather than professional competence of individual, or discuss the discipline or dismissal of all complaints or charges against, brought against a public officer, employee, staff, member, or individual. We are in, we will move to executive session and be back here.
Pronto.
And we will be, thank you, Mr. McDonald. We also will be approving executive session minutes from February twelfth. Do we need to read all those dates? We do.
There are a lot of them.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. We also will be releasing executive session minutes from January twenty-seven, two thousand and fourteen, April seven, two thousand and fourteen, July seven, two thousand and fourteen, January eleven, two thousand and sixteen, December fifth, two thousand and sixteen, November fifth, two thousand and eighteen, November nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, February ten, twenty twenty, June eight, twenty twenty, September twenty-one, twenty twenty, October five, twenty twenty, and also minutes from January twelve, two oh two one, September thirteen, two oh two one, September twenty-seven, two oh two one, October eighteenth, two oh two one, December twenty, two oh two one, January ten, two oh two two, February twenty-eight, two oh two two, April twenty-five, two oh two two, May ninth, two oh two two, May nineteenth, two oh two two, June sixth, two oh two two, and finally, July eighteen, two oh two two, July twenty-fifth, two oh two two, August eighth, two oh two two, October thirty-one, two oh two two, March twenty-seven, two oh two three, April ten, two oh two three, May eighth, two oh two three, May twenty-second, two oh two three, July ten, two oh two three, August twenty-eight, two oh two three, and September eleven, two oh two three. We will adjourn as executive session and be back as close to six-thirty to open our regular session as we can. Thank you very much.
I am the president of the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing as we honor our veterans, both past and present, here and abroad. Thank you. Please be seated. This is an open meeting. It begins here in room three oh four. All members, active members for are here. One has been absent, and so we, our votes will be taken in unison, not on a roll call basis. We have signed the warrant, and we are ready to go. New business. First off is the DNRT Conservation Restriction Approval, Solnier Property Map, twenty-eight, Lot forty-two. Please introduce yourself and state your case.
I'm Nick Wildman. I'm the Executive Director of the Dartmouth Natural Resources Trust. I'm here tonight to present and ask for the Select Board's approval on a conservation restriction to be held by the town on the fifteen-acre Solnier, formerly the Solnier property. I have copies here if anyone would like one. As many of you know, this is related to a Community Preservation Committee Award for the Russell's Mills Conservation Project. That award was approved by Town Meeting in October of two thousand and twenty-two, and that award was to protect two parcels, this one and an adjacent. The conservation restriction associated with the Booth property was approved relatively quickly. Unfortunately, the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs had some additional comments on the Solnier CR, and so that required the town manager, the town's legal counsel, and I believe also the CPC to kind of help negotiate through some of those issues related to that. So that's why this one is coming before you so much later. But this helps us, you know, in keeping with DNRT's partnership with the town, this is an excellent way for us to continue to preserve the really important natural resources of town and continue our partnership in managing those. This parcel, the Solnier, is now part of our Russell's Mills Woods Preserve on Fisher Road, which is open to the public and receives, you know, visitors every day. So really excellent example of our partnership. Any questions?
Questions from the board?
Again, another very nice project. Thank you to your staff and yourself.
Thank you.
I thank you for including the maps in your information so I could identify which property we were talking about.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments or questions on the motion? Are we ready to vote? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I hear none. Four zero.
Thank you all.
And we're going to sign this?
We'll get him a copy.
Okay. Thank you. Next, Tree Committee update. We're going in order.
Hi, I'm Ann Parsons, Chair of the Tree Committee, Dartmouth Tree Committee. I wanted to tell you about the projects that we've got going on. First, the Arbor Day events with the school is going well. This is going to be our third year during Arbor Day. DeMello School and Potter School are going to be taking, accepting trees from Eversource and planting them on Arbor Day. Arbor Day traditionally is the last Friday in April, so it's probably going to happen on that day. Last year was hugely successful, and I think it will be again this year. Eversource gave DeMello three trees, along with a hundred and fifty seedlings. The whole school participated. You should have seen four or five hundred kids sitting on the gym floor, learning about trees that day. It was very cool. And Dartmouth, we covered it. So we've extended to Potter School this year. We hope to keep getting more and more of these schools involved with Arbor Day, which used to happen, I understand, here in town for years, and then sort of went away. That's one initiative. We also have an ongoing Dartmouth Tree Walk, which happens in the fall. It's happened two years in a row. We hope to continue that. We're putting our tree walks on something called Pocket Sites, which is an app for retaining, so you could do self-directed tree walks. We also are, there's a subcommittee involved with a tree bylaw, town bylaw, and they gave me this little description because they're going to be approaching you at a different time. So they've been reviewing the State Shade Tree Law, Chapter eighty-seven, and researching tree bylaws of Massachusetts cities and towns over the past year to determine which bylaw provisions could help protect and improve the tree canopy of Dartmouth. At this point, they developed a conceptual bylaw and have already gotten input from the town administrator and several key staff in DPW Planning and the Building Department. They hope to meet with the Board of Public Works and Planning Board in the near future for more discussion. So, you know, that's usually a very long process, and they're actually very far along in just about a year and a half. Then we have somebody who is starting in on a street tree inventory of all of Dartmouth street trees. This is a volunteer. He's just beginning, I know, but we're, you know, might as well reach for the stars. It can help bring in a lot of money, a lot of grant money, and we're trying to use Portland, Oregon as a model. If you're interested in tree inventories, look online at Portland because they've done a great job. What else? There's, let's see, we also are tree planning, Trees Are Cool Planning Campaign, and we collect, we raised ten thousand dollars in two thousand and twenty-three for our tree planting. We just planted at Columbus Day last October, eight trees at middle school, and right next door, you'll see them, see all the small trees that was planted by Warren Knowles. We have two thousand dollars left. One of my questions to you was, I was hoping to, that we could plant two or three young new trees out front here, and I noticed you have a new marble, something there. But, and also, I think, Sean, you mentioned you weren't sure of the configuration out there, whether you wanted new trees or not, but we have it in the kitty for you. All you have to say is yes.
It's not my decision. It's the board's. But there's underground utilities out there, so we would need a plan showing where you, what's supposed to plant them.
Dig safe.
There's one or two trees out there that are pretty rough shape. That really should come down. So you instruct me what to do next.
You're looking just to replace the existing two trees?
It depends. I would need to get Warren back. One definitely I was looking at tonight has to come down. So be replacing one of them. Would it be, we probably can pay for three new trees back there, smaller, smaller trees like Dogwood or whatever, flowering trees, and jazz things up a bit.
Hmm.
I'm sorry. I mean, it's pretty out there, but, so you tell me what I do next with that.
Maybe somehow mark the spots on the lawn with maybe a stake, and we can have you talk to our facilities and Park Director, Tim Lancaster, and he knows kind of where the utilities are underground and whether it will work.
Okay. So you're, you're okay with that? Because last time I talked about this, you thought maybe you were going to be digging up the oval and recreating the parking out there.
The plan is to redesign the parking lot eventually, but you, you want to plant your trees sooner rather than later, it sounds like.
Yeah. Okay.
Shouldn't have any effect on where the trees are going to go anyway.
Do you need to vote on that at all?
No, just need to find out.
Okay.
Great. That's exciting. So we have a subcommittee working on an Adopt a Tree Program, which we're going to model after New Bedford's Adopt a Tree Program, which I talked about last time. It has been very successful through the years. They have as many as a hundred, a hundred and fifty residents saying, yes, bring us a tree. The residents pay about three, three fifty for a tree that the city brings to them, I believe from Sylvan Nursery, and plants for them, with the understanding that the resident will take care of the tree. And I'm actually appearing especially to ask you for ten, ten thousand dollars a year toward this program. I got excited because last time Sean McDonald remembered this program from quite a few years ago. We need some help financially. We can't keep raising individual money. I think we are, we have a lot of grant possibilities, but we really are reaching out to the town to give us some incentive for this program. So that's about it. And if you, you know, want me to write out a proposal to you for that money, I can do that, however you want me to. Or if you, you know, if you say it's not possible, please tell me now, or give me a little bit of hope and encouragement.
I have a question.
Mr. Brooks, do you have the money?
I do not have that money. I can, sure, I can watch it, write a check and watch it bounce. When we collect fines from people who cut down their trees when they shouldn't cut down trees, which I know does not happen that often, does that go into a tree replanting?
General fund.
Goes into general fund?
General fund.
General fund. Okay. So if someone's been fined, there's not a plan then to replant the trees on the town land?
Sometimes they'll be fined, but also they'll have to pay to replant trees to replace the ones they cut down.
Okay. I know it doesn't happen that often. I was just thinking that could be a funding source. But would it, I think it's a great idea. Could this be a citizens petition to Town Meeting, or do we put it into our budget?
It could be either.
Either.
Something we should maybe look towards for Fall Town Meeting, or is it too late now for?
For Fall Town Meeting?
Yeah.
Yes.
Too late for spring?
For spring, yes.
I know we already submitted the articles for that, but that, to me, either way, I support that idea.
Plant in the fall. I truly want to. Plant them in the fall also.
Yeah.
It's a Fall Town Meeting to put it in the budget.
So I guess I have another question, though. If, oh, we wouldn't have to buy the trees in advance because we'd just buy them from Sylvan, so we don't have, need a spot or anything.
You know, there's something called Greening the Gateway Cities Program. Are you familiar with this? And New Bedford is getting twenty-four hundred new trees, and it's already planted sixteen hundred new trees through this program. The problem is it's concentrated in environmental justice neighborhoods. Fall River also is getting thousands of trees through this program. So I'm, I'm trying to, you know, encourage us to, you know, try and pick up the pace here and have some input from the town as, as best you can. I'm going to try with the Gateway Cities Program, but I don't think there's any, any way that's going to go in my favor.
Why is that?
Because I don't.
No gateway city.
We're not a gateway city, yeah. We're not, we're not an environmental justice neighborhood, are we?
Last time I looked, I don't think so.
So I have a question. The, the program that you said was modeled after New Bedford, if a resident calls New Bedford and wants a tree, they will pay three hundred and fifty dollars towards the tree. And how do we determine, or how do you determine which is an appropriate tree to be planted?
Those are all, they're all chosen. There are five or six species that I believe, we're, Chance Perks, who's head of that program, is meeting with a subcommittee. But I believe there's a list of trees, and it depends where the tree is going to be placed. A lot of these trees they're using these days are smaller trees, less than thirty feet tall. And there are a couple of reasons for that. They're easier to prune, they fit under the wires. So even Tim Barber, as you know, whenever he's planting trees down at Bliss Corner, he's planting hundreds of new trees down there, and they're all smaller trees.
I got a suggestion for you.
Yep.
It's the second time I've done this today, but we have a professional grant writer employed by the town. He happens to be sitting right over there, Chris Vitale. And maybe we could even use that ten thousand dollars rather than to use it, we could use it as matching grant money for some grant that he could find for us.
Absolutely.
So I would suggest that, that you, you work with Chris and look towards Fall Town Meeting to maybe either donate the ten thousand, we get it from the town, or maybe we use it as matching funds. But if there's a grant out there, Chris is an expert to find it.
Wonderful to know. What's your name, last name?
Lilo with an E.
Mr. Chairman.
Sorry, Chris.
Yes, sir. How about a fundraiser?
We can.
They do that now. Out front, we could post, we could post it out front. We have our communications director have her get it on our website. What would it cost to put it in, in that form?
We, we did a fundraiser, as I mentioned.
Do another one.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay.
Sure.
There are a lot of grants for trees out there, and that's why, and we've been really looking for a grant writer, so Chris would be great.
Okay.
And my last thing, I wanted to thank you. As a DeMello School grandparent, I had a very excited, last year, I guess she was a second grader, come home with her little sapling to plant, which is all labeled and.
Good.
I have been cursed with outer green thumb, so I'm not so sure how it fared, but.
Did it go into a pot?
She was very excited.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah.
Eversource is, is really doing well. I know they give as many as ten trees away to towns free, so, and the seedlings glore, so keep an eye on that.
I will.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Town meeting? Aim for a town meeting.
Fall Town Meeting, yeah.
It's not over.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for the work you do for us. Okay.
Move it over to us.
Okay. Next on the list, we're going right down the list in order. Council on Aging Feasibility Study Focus Group. Who do we have here?
Hi, good evening. Amy DePietro, Council on Aging. I am here to invite members of the Select Board to join our Master Plan Focus Group. We are working with Brewster Thornton to look at future, future expansion goals of our center and other facility improvements. We do not have any, we don't have a date set for the next meeting with Brewster Thornton, but I am hoping that it's within the next few weeks.
Probably a good idea to have our oldest member, wouldn't it be?
Who's that?
That is funny.
We are also reaching out. We have members from the Dartmouth Friends of the Elderly, hopefully Coastline, and a participant from one of the instructors, one or two of the instructors that utilize our building on a daily, weekly basis.
So what are you asking us to do?
Attend, attend our focus group meeting, just to give input on what you would like to see, what kind of services the town, or you personally would like to see the, the senior center and the Council on Aging provide in, in the future.
You meet more than once, maybe, or?
I would say maybe two or three times, three times tops, for, as far as the group. We've met once. We have met with Brewster Thornton once. They did a walkthrough of the building, and now they want to get a little more information from the town.
Let us know the dates.
Okay.
We'll go.
Dates and times.
We'll be there.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, two, two of us.
At least two.
Two will be there.
Okay, great.
No more, no more than two.
Two.
Then three is a meeting.
Great. So when they send us a date, we'll meet in, give us enough time that we can pick two, and then we'll be there.
As soon as I hear, you will know.
Two will be there. Okay. Thanks. Thank you very much. We're going to skip one down. We're going to save the health insurance proposal to the, towards the end. Next on the list.
Hold on, Mr. Chairman. Can we take the Burgo out of order? The only reason why is Mr. Burgo's got to be at practice at seven thirty.
Oh, okay. Didn't know that. Are you going to the practice, too?
No, I, no, I don't do basketball.
Hell of a center. I didn't know that, if that's the case.
I just wanted to.
Nope, sorry. Okay.
He's got an AAU practice and.
McGratney Property Lease Approval. Who do we have here?
Ah, hi, Steve Burgo from Burgo Basketball Association. Just want to introduce some of the guys that are here. This is Bobby Bernado. This is a new addition for our soccer part of the BBA. Preston Labonte and Amir Suarez, and Laurie Miller is one of our advisory boards. So, and the other guys unfortunately are all out of town. But no, we're just, I just wanted to come and try and get this done. We've sat down and gone over this contract with you guys, and I think we got everything we did not think. We did get everything squared away. So I guess the next thing to do is listen to what you have to say and just put our, John Hancock on the dotted line, or any questions that you have, what we're intending on doing, or would be fine.
Questions? So we're okay with, with lease agreement, and Burgo's okay with lease agreement?
We've, we've met to discuss the lease issues. We've, we've reviewed it with council. They've reviewed it with their staff. We're both all set. It's ready to be signed.
So what's before is, is the deal?
Is the deal. All right. So I'm going to make a motion that we sign this lease agreement with Burgo Basketball for the McGratney Apostle for the term of beginning April first of two thousand and twenty-four and ending on March thirty-first, two thousand and fifty-four. This is the thirty-year lease. This is the first thirty-year lease in the town.
Approved by Town Meeting.
And approved by Town Meeting. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Okay, let's vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Yes.
Opposed? I hear none. It's four zero.
Look.
I would, my, the only comment I'm going to add.
Go right ahead, Dave.
Is that we met, we met a few weeks back, and I said to Steve, bring in, don't come alone. And he brought in a group, and he brought in some young blood that I have to say I was tremendously impressed with.
I'm very happy about that.
Looking towards the future. He even knew how to keep you in line so that he wouldn't keep talking.
Well, I don't know. Nobody, they tried, but.
But I, but very impressed with that whole process because that's what it's going to take. It's going to take.
Well, that's the whole thing.
Forward-thinking and some young blood, and you did it. And I think that's really a good thing, and hopefully, as a result of all that, you could put together a program that's going to work and have a future.
Well, we got a lot of young blood, and we got young blood still coming in after they got out of college. We've, my grandson is very interested in, because he's been involved since he was a peanut. And he wants to keep it going and keep it in the family. And, you know, with these guys and the younger guys that I have, you know, I think it's going to be great. And it's only a plus for the town, because I'm trying to do something so the town doesn't have to do it. That's what we're trying to do. And the thing is, is that now that we've got this, we get this signed, now we just go to the bank. As a matter of fact, these are our designers, these are our architects, and I've been working with Dave for how long? A long time, aren't they? Ten years?
Fifteen years.
Yeah. About fifteen years we've been trying to do this.
Okay.
And we're ready to go.
No pressure, Preston Labonte, but to me, you look like the youngest guy out there. You will be the person thirty years from now.
He's not the youngest. I got one younger than him.
Oh, all right. Well.
Grandpa.
All right.
I'll be there in thirty years.
Stan, if you're there and I'm there, there's something wrong.
Momified.
You're very right.
I'll, I'll be there in spirit. Let me put it to you that way.
Well, good luck. And this is the chance you really needed?
Yes, yes. It's, it's.
Use it. Go for it.
There's a lot, there's a lot that can come from this, and adding Bobby Bernado to this with the soccer is just going to.
Great.
Add tremendous to this, to soul organization.
Go for it.
Thank you.
Great. Is practice outdoors tonight?
No, it's at book. It's at book. I'm not going outdoors. I got lights, but I'm not going outdoors.
Thank you very much.
Do I have to sign, or?
We'll, we'll get you a copy to sign.
Okay. All right.
Yep.
We're signing it now. Thank you very, very much for your time.
Take care. Okay, next on the list. We all set?
Yeah.
Next on the list is Stat Update on Age Settlement.
Yes, so as the Bordeaux's South Coast EMS had reached a settlement with the Attorney, I'm going to, I'm going to.
I'm sorry.
Got to lay.
Go for it, son.
Yeah, I did. Had a settlement agreement with the Attorney General's office. Part of South Coast EMS is also Stat. Ryan Cabral, the Chief Operating Officer of Stat EMS, reached out to alleviate any concerns that the board might have with his, in his email about the settlement, which, as much as he could get into because it's confidential agreement. The board had asked to reach out to the, for me to reach out to the community to see if any Dartmouth residents had had issues with billing. We had not heard from any residents in regard, that regard.
Excellent.
And as I mentioned, we've always had great service from Stat and Town. It's been a great partnership. But I wanted, I asked Ryan to come in to answer any questions of the board, that he could, that, that's allowed by the settlement. But there he is.
You got a few things to say for us, Ryan?
Sure. First off. Okay. I basically have just a couple outlined bullet points, as I expressed to Mr. McGinnis. I'm limited in what I could say in a public capacity due to the agreement we have with the Attorney General. But there are a couple important things I feel like if I put it out there may put you guys at ease, or at least needs to be heard. This was an audit spanning a timeframe of nearly a decade. Many of the practices that were called into question had already been addressed prior to the beginning of this investigation. We have brought on a consultant approved by the Attorney General, who will continue to audit us and report back to the Attorney General, as well as guiding us in updating our billing practices and help us implement a comprehensive compliance plan. I have every intent of providing Mr. McGinnis updates along the way. Although I may not have been in this position when these issues occurred, I take full ownership for them, and I will make, in my mission, to make sure that we're never in this situation ever again. As far as how we're, we'll be moving forward from this, you all should expect nothing but business as usual from us. You will see no change in our operations or the level of care that we proudly provided to our patients for the past thirty years. It's about as much as I can offer right now. If you have specific questions, I'll do the best I can with them. I do want to know if, if there's, I'm accessible to you guys twenty-four seven. You can reach out to me privately anytime you want, and I will answer wholeheartedly as best I can.
Well, my only, my only comment, or actually, my only question is this. At any point in time during this situation, this settlement agreement with the Attorney General's office did, any service to the citizens of town of Dartmouth was put in question or jeopardy?
None whatsoever. Not, not at all.
Okay.
Excuse me, but mainly another city or town.
Excuse me?
The, the, the concern by the Attorney General, these, these particular billing issues were for another town or a city, New Bedford. They weren't all just in Dartmouth.
It was predominantly our sister company. Stat's involvement.
But you own it.
Yes, sir. My last point that I didn't, I didn't bring up was not a, not an allegation or any part of that audit had anything to do with our billing practices towards patients. It was solely focused on Medicare and Medicaid. Medicare and Medicaid. No patients were...
Just the wrong numbers.
I get Mr. Brooks?
No, I know that we asked for residents to get into contact, and I am relieved that no one did because that meant that we didn't have problems. So it would be much different if we had received calls and concerns.
I guess what I'm hearing is that you got substantial bills to pay going forward.
Yes, sir.
But the cash flow is going to be there. The service will be not compromised.
Without a doubt.
Okay. And if any residents do have something to say or complain, they can bring it forward to the town administrator at any time. If that's come up, we want to make sure that's available.
Absolutely.
Any other comments or questions of anybody? Thanks for facing the music and coming to talk to us, and hopefully going forward is smooth sailing.
Yes, sir. You can count on that. Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. Thank you, guys.
Okay.
Let's take care of these Silveras.
That's next. That is next.
Okay.
We got it, okay.
Okay, next is the South Coast Development Permit Refund Request. Mr. Silvera.
David Silvera, South Coast and Associates.
Yep.
So you want me... It sounds like you want me to introduce the claim or... So it's for the refund for the building permit for Winterville Road, correct?
I think we're all aware of the concerns.
Excuse me?
I think we're all aware of the concerns. I don't think we need to rehash it.
Right. So, yeah, I'm looking forward to hopefully making good, and this has been a long road to get here today. So I'll let you take the lead on this, then. What's the town looking to do here?
I do have a... I have a couple of things. Number one, I know you went to the state and they issued some kind of a decision on this.
Yep.
Have we received that decision yet?
We have not. We don't have the formal decision. So no, we have not received it, unless you have it and you have not forwarded it.
Yeah, we actually forwarded that, and we actually forwarded a copy of the video of the hearing, which they made the decision in the hearing. So...
Their formal written?
No.
Christian Silvera, South Coast and Associates. So, no, we received the formal decision. We did not forward that to the town because we were told the town would also receive a copy of it.
Okay, officially we haven't...
Okay.
We're saying we haven't received it, so...
So we'll forward it to you guys. We had forwarded the video, which I know some of you may have seen of the hearing, but that was not it.
So the question that I have is based upon that decision. What was it, in essence, briefly, what was it based upon? The number of days, whatnot?
Yeah, so there were multiple failures to act found throughout the process of the permits issuance, but at the end of the day, it boiled down to the amount of days it took for that permit to be issued.
Okay, and what was the number of days that...
So the legal number of days is supposed to be 30 days to either reject or accept or deny. Deny or approve a permit, it took 126 days for that permit to be issued or denied.
But there was also, within that timeframe, there was also some material that you guys needed to submit that wasn't submitted, and then eventually it was submitted. But I'm looking at the timeframe here.
Yep.
Okay, and I see the historical commission was completed on July 11th. The building department submitted documents review July 12th, the permit fee residential July 12th. The inspector review of site plot affidavit for qualification was July 25th. The taxes was completed on July 31st, the fire department review July 31st, conservation review July 31st, health department review August 2nd, assessors approval August 2nd, DPW September 13th. I want to just go back to the DPW thing because there's some questions on that. And then it said inspector review September 15th, and then permit issuance September 15th, and then permit issue notification to assessor September 18th. So in essence, what you wanted to do with the house was to build the new house while still maintaining the old house, and then once the new house was built, to demolish the old house?
Correct. That was our client's wishes.
Okay, and then at some point in time, you asked for a phased procedure and then withdrew the phased procedure.
So I can go into all of that if you allow me the opportunity.
I'm just trying to...
Yeah, so let me explain the timeline a little bit.
Wrap my head around this.
So we were asked a couple of times over the course of the months, you know, a couple of documents were asked for over time, a PLS stamp on the plot plan, but we were never properly cited any of the requirements or any of that, regardless of how many times we asked to actually be cited a code reference regarding some of these requirements that you were trying to... That they were trying to require. So it got to the point where we approached the former commissioner, Mr. Braga, and said, "You know what? We just need to get this job started. Could we do just a foundation-only permit right now so that we can break ground and get the wheels turning?" We ended up withdrawing that request because Mr. Braga was playing games with releasing this permit, and we didn't want to risk putting in the foundation and then have to go another 100 days before he issue us the building permit to proceed forward. So it was after consulting with our clients and with our consultant, we decided to wait until the permit was issued in full so we didn't have to play this dance anymore.
Okay, so, and with the DPW, the... I guess at some point in time, they were looking to see whether you had connection approval from the city in New Bedford, because this is a connection that has to go through the city?
Yeah, the commissioner, former Commissioner Braga, was looking for that, but this all kind of stems back to 105.3.1 from the state building code. It's very, very clear to the commissioner that certain criteria has to be met to release a building permit, which is zoning conformance, water to the site, workers' compensation from the builder, and a couple of other items. We met all those criteria. But the problem was with the specific item you're talking about is that New Bedford's not going to release a water connection permit until there's a permit issued from the town of Dartmouth. So it's an impasse. So the commissioner had a stance where I'm not going to move, and New Bedford's like, "Well, I'm not going to move either." But regardless of any of that happening, that was created by the commissioner. It's clear that there's water at the site. There's no denying that there's water service at that street. That's all he needed. But that's not even really the issue that the state building code appeal board decide on. They said before we even got to that part, the commissioner may just go to historic, which was not required in the first place. In fact, they went over the, I think it was 14 days or 21 days to make a ruling if it was a historic project or not. The historic commission ignored that, and it was the commissioner's role as the administrator of that department to say, "Okay, well, they took too long. I need to advance this down the line." We, in good faith, still went to that historic meeting. It got approved. And all along the line, we were telling Mr. Braga that we weren't required to do this, but we're going to do it. Let's get this going. So we went to the next step. And along the way, we kept pointing out where, listen, just let us know in writing per 105.3.1 that you have to cite us in writing why you're not releasing this building permit after this 30-day mark or leading up to it. He never did that. We kept warning him over and over again. So we had one failure to act. Then it took Mr. Braga about 70 days to assign that permit submittal to the DPW. So what's happening now in Dartmouth is we're going back to that, but Mr. Braga was not opening up these permit submittals to the other departments until certain departments reviewed them first. So DPW's receiving this permit 70 days into the submittal and be like, "We're just looking at this for the first time." So now they got to go through all their, you know, review process, which just keeps elongating, elongating. So this is another failure to manage the department. So the building code appeal board saw this, and not just this case, it was another appeal. We did two appeals in Boston, one unrelated to this one, but both failures to act, and both were, they agreed with us that Mr. Braga failed to act correctly with the laws that govern 105.3.1, which protect the builder and the consumer for these departments to act and process these permits, you know, within a reasonable time. Now, is this a very safe way to move? It is, but it's not the commission's decision to make this. It's our decision as a consumer and a builder representing a consumer to decide if all the criteria is met by the law. It's not the town's decision to slow this project up based on they want to take their time, which I don't agree with the way it was managed. It was very mismanaged. So, you know, going back to, it was just a failure to act. And what happens is these clients had a window, a finance window, to get their building permit. No bank is going to close on a loan until you have that building permit. That's the golden ticket. And this went way too long, and that financing window closed, interest rates raised, rose rather, and here we are. Now we have a building permit all these months later, but they can't build it now, so...
Okay, so what happens to the building permit now? Because isn't there a life expectancy of the permit?
Yeah, so that's the thing. So a permit is valid for a year, but if work doesn't begin within six months, that permit lapses. We're at month five and a half right now. I requested two weeks ago for that permit to be extended an additional six months, hoping that maybe interest rates might drop in six months and hoping that the client will decide to continue forward with us as their contractor. But what a better solution to this is, is no one in this room knows where interest rates are going to go in the next six months. So what I'm proposing is to extend the life of the permit for two years for the client so that way, once rates drop, they can build this house that they already went through 120 days of permitting for. But also because of how much runaround there was, because we had to fire a consultant from the job because of words that were said from the former commissioner, because of many different things that happened along the road and the fact that now they have to push off their dream, we're looking for a refund for this permit for our clients because they have deferred maintenance on this house that they were choosing not to do because they thought they were going to be tearing it down, that now they have these big pile of bills that they have to take care of instead of the house being torn down. So we believe it's only fair to extend the life and to be refunded for that permit.
So if we extend the life of the permit, then you're looking also to get money back on the permit.
Right.
You're looking to get the permit fee back. So in other words, in essence, then at that point in time, you get a permit for free for two years. I mean, that's in essence, that's what it is. I mean, if we extend, I mean, if we extend the life of the permit for two years, you know, that... It's unprecedented, that's for sure.
I mean...
I mean, I'm just thinking if we extend, I mean, I would... Because I'm at the point where I think right now, I don't have a problem with the refund, but no permit. But if you want the extended of the permit for two years, then you get the extension of the permit for two years.
Mr. McDonald? More importantly, my understanding, and we had an agreement on this, that you were making a refund request. I, for once, the first time I've heard about an extension of the building permit.
It came up in the meeting, but...
It's in the letter that we sent you guys formally requesting a refund. Our request for what we feel should happen here is outlined thoroughly in that letter, which is an extension and a refund after everything we had to go through. I mean, this job, we lost over $150,000 in profit. If we don't end up building this, we deferred work for this job. There's a lot that went into this, so...
So, to be diplomatic here, you know, the state building code is mass general law, right? You can't, you guys up here cannot change with the law. The permit can be extended, right, through a normal course if we submit to the building department or the state to extend this building permit, if we choose to. So I think where Ms. McDonald's going with this is that basically, either you're going to get refunded or you're going to extend your permit. So the way I look at it is, you know, if the town's willing to refund the permit, that's fine. I mean, it's going to lapse, and I think the agreement here would be if we let this permit lapse in two weeks or a month or whatever it's going to occur, then at that point in time, if we provide you that, you know, lapsed permit, then I think that's a minimum where the refund should occur because it's clear we're not going to move forward with the project at that point in time, you know. I mean, at least it could happen here. I mean, these people, put South Coast aside and the profit we lost as a business and the jobs we deferred, these people, their dreams are deferred, and it may never happen.
Go ahead. Finish up what you were going to say.
I'm going to finish up. So if, all right, so if we decide to refund, it would be contingent upon the lapsed permit. So once the permit has lapsed, then we can go with the refund. The only question that I have is the... My phone went dead. Not dead, but... The permit total was $5,999. The building fee was $5,824 with the plan review fee of $175. Because the plans were reviewed, I would say I would refund the $58.24.
That's fair. I mean, that's kind of what we're advocating for the town to go back to is really pay that plan review fee upfront and pay for the permit when it actually gets issued like we used to do. And hopefully we get back to that, but I think that's very fair.
That's what I'm trying to come up with, something equitable so that we make, you know, the homeowners whole, you know. As far as the loss of business, you know, unfortunately, you know, that's the business, you know. I don't want to say it happens all the time, but it doesn't happen all the time. But, yeah, I think that's the way I'm leaning right now.
I mean, quite honestly, if the town's not going to agree to extend the life of this permit and issue some sort of refund, especially because of everything our clients had to go through with all of this, our clients would rather keep the permit paid for and have us keep extending it every six months. But again, now every six months, our building department right now is in shambles, so I requested two weeks ago for this to be extended. I've heard nothing regarding it.
Yeah.
So now I'm going to have to hope every six months that this permit's going to be extended until the town agrees to, or until they can get the financing to build this, so...
Let me just ask this question. If your clients are going, if your clients are going to go ahead with this, is it going to be the same plans and everything?
Yes.
Nothing is going to change? Because what I would also probably come up with is that when you do apply for the permit, that we waive the plan review fee because we've already reviewed the plans.
Right, but they're not going to, like, it was pretty frustrating for them to have to keep asking us over 120 days when their building permits can be issued. They're not going to want to have to go through that again, so...
Well, no, I'm just saying, well, I mean, you'd have to apply the permit, and I would think that, you know, at that point in time, because most of the plans have already been, if not all the plans, have already been reviewed, that it shouldn't take that long.
Hope. You'd hope.
It shouldn't take. Let me just say this clear. It shouldn't take that long.
Mr. Mickelson?
It seems to me that your clients are not going to build this house for now, but let me just go further. If we were to give you the $58.24, I would like our town attorney to draw up some type of a contract and why we're giving it to you, and that we will not be held responsible for any financial losses by your company, either you or your father or your customers.
Right, again, we're not going to take, we're not going to take just a refund on this permit because this client's not going to want to have to go through permitting again in this town. I mean, like, they're...
That's the only way I'm going to vote for it.
Yeah.
We draw up a contract, you get the money back, but you have to sign it.
Right, because I understand what you're saying, Ms. Mickelson, because potentially this litigious situation, right? As a business, we lost its quantifiable income, right?
Yes.
At the hands of the former commissioner, and there's a loss of opportunity for these homeowners, right?
Whatever, however it happens.
Right. So, and that's debatable if that's just the way the cookie crumbles type of thing. I don't agree with that because literally the only thing that was in the way was the commissioner and his lack of management. So, but that's what you're proposing, and...
It'll be fair. It'll be signed, but we need to protect the town.
Right, and hopefully the rest of the members of the select board don't agree with that view. I think, I'm not saying, I'm not saying we're going to pursue it, but what I'm looking out for is what's the right thing here for that client, and the right thing to do is, I mean, really, it's on us. We've paid for the permit actually on the behalf. So we're actually negative and lost opportunity. But I think the right thing to do here, this is just the beginning of other things that we've been having floating conversations about with, you know, some reform in the building department, which I appreciate, Ms. Tattelbaum, for being very diplomatic and hearing our points of view. So I want to thank everybody here, and if you have any other questions regarding this, you know...
Well, I don't see a lot of good things happening right now because I'm reading what you're saying, that you want to leave it open for some type of legal issue or a lawsuit.
I think he just wants it open. Quite, but quite honestly, like, the systems that are in place to protect citizens, they failed. They failed. And so now we saw ripple effect across... And so, now, we saw ripple effect across the board. So now to make us held back even further, regard, like, if this happens again, and again, and again, we might be having a different conversation. But I think in this point in time, what the best thing for us to do is going to be, if Mr. McGinnis can nudge whoever, whoever is even in the Building Department right now issuing their nine permits, if he can nudge them to look into the extension of this permit for six months, which is what the building code book allows, per formal approval by a commissioner, nudge them to, to give us an extension. And I'll just have to keep extending every six months, because our clients are not gonna want just a refund for their dream home, where they're gonna have their wedding, where they're gonna start their family, everything that they plan to do in the next year.
They want both.
Can, I have a question. I, I'm just trying to get on it, on my brain wrapped around, and this is the first time I've ever looked at this paperwork. So, not tonight, I've looked at it all weekend, but first time in my life I've ever looked at a building permit paperwork. But, so you submitted on May 15th, 2023, but then I see other submittals of other pieces. So, when to you did this clock start ticking? Was it on May 15th, or was it a subsequent date when you were sending in other paperwork, July and August?
Yeah, no, so the clock starts, there's no, it's very clear that when the submittal is received, traditionally the Building Department would stamp the paperwork, but now we're using online portals, that submittal date, that's when, the first submittal is there, and then the commissioner or inspector has 30 days from that point in time to say, "We need these other pieces of paper, or we need these other items according to this code." And that, that didn't even happen. We were, we were just like, "Hey, listen, just let us know what's missing, and we'll get it to you." But it was just like this game. I mean, honestly...
So, if they contacted you and said, "We needed the HERS rating for new construction", which was submitted on June 2nd, that was because they had let you know that you needed it?
Right, what's supposed to happen, and you actually, we had seen it with one of the fill-ins, his name was Chris, what's supposed to happen is they're supposed to say, "Per 780 CMR, 105 point, whatever", they're supposed to cite where a requirement is in the code for additional documentation that they're going to ask for. So, the trick, the, the items that you see trickled in there are things that Mr. Braga had one of the secretaries to say, "Please give us a HERS report", or "Please give us a PLS stamp". It was no, "Per this code, please give us the following." So, that's how it's supposed to happen. It's actually supposed to happen in a denial package, if they're gonna deny the permit, or if they wanna, you know, state other recommendations, they have to reference code regarding what it's going, what those recommendations are.
Okay.
So, attachments that you see trickled in are things that we were being asked for along the way.
Okay, and then I do see, in the timeline, we got a, a copy of the timeline, I do see where something was activated, and so a building department's submittal document review was activated on 5/15 and completed on July 12.
Yeah, sounds, sounds about right.
Okay, but then, when the permit issuance was on September 15th. So, that's when everything finally...
The issuance, yeah, from submittal to issuance, it was 126 days. And, like, we're just on this weekly, multiple times, and, you know, we'd go like five, six days without hearing a response, or a phone call back. So then, Mr. McGinnis recommended that, you know, we're having some tension, "Let's keep all the conversations in a portal, in writing." So that way, it's like, even playing field, great. And, and you can even see in there, like, I'd ask a question, and I wouldn't get an answer for four or five days. You know, it's just, it's just, the day's just going by and by. It's just like, I would, I would ask the commissioner, "Please cite me per section 105.3.1, what is missing? Nothing. Please cite me", and it just was not happening.
But I see extended times in the Building Department, the DPW, and the Historic Commission.
Right.
Extended times, every other department seems, within a day or two, that when they got it, they made a...
Yeah, you know, this, this, this appeal in Boston, you know, it's from, it's, it's other inspectors, commissioners, it's, it's peer reviewed. It's not like, you know, the general public. These are people that understand the process. And, you know, one comment that stood out is this, this type of behavior, cumbersome submittals encourage rogue builders, people that don't wanna pull permits and just kinda, don't wanna get tied up in that. And I can see how that happens, but we, as a business, we follow the rules here, and unfortunately, if we always follow the rules, you know, in this case, we lost an opportunity. I mean, I was never gonna be building a house without a permit, but it's just, is what it is. And, you know, tonight, I don't wanna bring in another situation, which is, I just worry about litigious situation. Tonight is about the permit refund that we're requesting. I don't wanna bring in these other legal maneuvers to take away the, the, the chance, if these homeowners wanna, what if they do wanna sue the town? That's their right, you know, if they wanna, I don't, that's not what I'm getting from them, or us, but let's not bring other matters into this.
Right now, they're just watching the building, the interest rates, to try to decide when they can make a move.
And let's be honest, a year from now, they could call us and say, "Hey, we found someone else to build the house." You know, they have that right. We're not, we're not tethered to these people. We're just trying to do the right thing by them.
I would agree that, I think that this point in time, the past is, unfortunately, there's a lot of unknowns, and a lot of the individual who was involved is no longer here. And I, my interest is that they might try to make it as whole as we possibly can within reason, not to set precedent, and to try to satisfy that we can then move forward. As I said, we promised we'd try to do, and that's why we're here. Okay, comments from members, are we in a position to make a motion?
I'm gonna make a motion that we, let's see, I need to get the final, okay, that we refund in the amount of $5,824 for residential building permit, RPB-23-429, upon a lapsed permit that was issued on September 15th, if I'm not mistaken. Yep, that was issued on September 15th.
So, just to clarify, so they're, I'm confused. They've asked for it to be extended every six months?
No, no, we're, we're saying that we're, we're gonna, we, as, we have a right to, to extend it?
You're gonna relinquish the permit and just take the refund?
So, we have the permit now, and it's gonna lapse in a couple of weeks, say, and we're gonna choose to continue to, to extend the permit.
So, you want the refund and the permit?
No, he's saying, i-if we choose to let it lapse, that that point in time, we would be refunded. Is, am I understanding that correct, correctly?
Yeah, I was just gonna, I was, yeah.
Just so you're clear, 90 days, or six months would be March 15th?
Six months is March 15th.
Well...
They wanna ask for extensions for up to two years.
Yeah, we were, we were hoping for an extension of the permit for two years and a refund. But if that can't happen, our next request would be for an extension of the permit for two years. If that can't happen, then I'm gonna have to keep requesting every six months for this permit to be extended to the Building Department. I'll have to ask them every six months.
So, if you want a two-year extension, you're not looking for a refund then?
I'm saying if both can't happen, then the next choice would be an extension for this permit.
I don't think both can happen. I don't even, just, I mean...
That's fine, that's fine.
For all intensive purposes.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm just saying, if both can't happen, the next choice would be...
But the question is, the question is, who holds the permit? Who paid for the permit?
So, the permit right now is...
And the question is, is if they decide to build, they have to build on that permit, correct?
So, the permit right now is in the client's name with us listed as the contractor. The former commissioner made a policy that permits in this town cannot be transferred. I don't know why that policy was created, but therefore, that permit, if they chose to build with someone else, would lapse unless they chose to come in front of you guys, and...
Christian, who paid for the permit?
So, we paid for it, but, but we have an agreement with our client that if they decided to move out to where, we would have to be refunded for that amount from the, from our client.
Okay, so, so if they move on from you, they, you will get your money back? I, I just wanna make sure that you guys are not losing the $58.24, I believe.
Could we have a second, please?
But they can't get both. They're not gonna get both. Well, one or the other.
Right, otherwise, when they start the process again, they would pay then.
I think it might be worth asking the attorney, the, the town attorney, if a permit can, can be extended in the lifetime of two years, because the Mass. State Building Code allows for an applicant, who is us, to extend a permit, to request extension of a permit, and it allows for an extension of up to six months.
You can answer that question.
Well, I would, you seem to know the building code very well.
Right.
Maybe you should get that information and bring it back towards the board. Instead of having town council have to do the work.
That's what we're just discussing. I think, I think the good intention here is for that, but at the end of the day, it's gonna be in our, in our hands, to, to submit to the building inspector, who's working under the building code. And although there's a policy, he may have a policy to not extend, it doesn't matter. The state building code clearly defines that it can be extended. So, as long as we keep extending according to the Mass. State Building Code, we will do that. But if we're going to, if we're going to not extend, or let it lapse, for whatever reason, I think that's the fair result here, is to say, the town will reimburse us. That, that's, that's, you know, in my opinion, I, I think...
They're gonna reimburse you at that point.
Right, right, but if, if they choose not to build...
We're not gonna, you're not gonna get it from us, and it cuts out.
Well, that's, I mean, so, so our, so we're kinda working this out here, right? We're trying to work this out with you guys, but, you know, for me, for, for the pain and suffering that these people went through and the opportunity, like, I think they should get a building permit for free. That's like, that's, that's, that's the least a town could do. If these people aren't gonna sue the town, we're not gonna sue, like, like this, this headache that they went through with, with that, it's not, it's not just our opinion, this is multiple people's opinion.
David, I've never, I've, in all my years, I've never heard of that.
Well, that's because you probably don't have many people coming up here and standing up for, for these kind of situations.
I mean, situation as it is, but, you know, and trying to, trying to find a reasonable, maybe not a palatable situation, I'm trying to find a reasonable solution.
Right, so think this through, right? I'm gonna think this through. Everyone, for most part, agree that there's a fumble that occurred here, right? That got to this point. At the end of the day, if they end up deciding their interest rates come down, and they decide to build a home, they still pay for the building permit. And so at the end of the day, what did the town actually do?
Well, yeah, the thing is, this is, yeah, I know, but the thing is, is that if, if, I mean, right now, the permit is issued on September 15th. So, four days from now becomes six months. I mean, I don't know if they define six months as six months, actual six months, or the number of days. But six months, so we're talking already March 15th. If you could find out from the state whether or not the building permit can be extended to two years?
It can. Oh, I know it can be extended another six months.
Another six months, but you're looking for two, you're looking for two, two years.
But I don't think that conversation's for here, meaning that's between us and the state, right? Because we hold that permit now.
But if you can find the information that the state can, says it's allowable by the Board of Selectmen to do that, then at our next meeting, we could make that possible.
Okay, I mean, I feel like it's kinda crossing the lines, meaning like, you know, what I do know the town can control right now is choosing to refund this building permit for the, for the, what this client went through.
My motion would be to refund the $58.24 upon a lapsed permit.
All right.
That would be my motion.
Okay.
So, the question is, that's the motion I make now? Or two weeks from now, if we have the information to extend, you know, to extend, if we can extend the building permit to two years, I would make that.
The unfortunate thing is now, at this point, because it's taken so long to get here, we don't have the time to wait for the state to give us that answer, and then be placed on the agenda in two weeks, because the...
But you can also, but you can also ask for an extension of the building permit for, for at least six months.
Okay, so that's, okay, so ask, so I already did that. So I would, I would ask that now, Mr. McGinnis, follow up with the Building Department, and ask them to look into that extension, because it's been a few weeks at this point. They can extend it, and then in six months from now, if we need to have this conversation again, or if in two weeks from now, we, we hear that we can extend it for two, two years, great.
For two weeks.
Yeah, me too, me too. We can have that conversation in two weeks.
All right, Mr. McGinnis, can you get ahold of the Building Department tomorrow morning, and tell them to look at that? And I'd like to have a decision as to whether or not the building permit will be extended by six months in our email box by the end of, by the, by the 15th.
Yeah.
Can you get that done?
Yes, yes, a minute.
Thank you, all right, so we'll get that done. And in the meantime, contact the state, find out if it's within the, we're in the purview of the Board of Selectmen to extend the building permit for a period of two years, instead of asking for four six-month extensions.
Right.
Okay?
Okay.
Find that out for us. If, if, if you have an answer for us by the, today's the 11th, it'll be 14, by the 25th, I will make that motion to extend it for the two years. If we don't have that answer, and the answer's still forthcoming, then we'll look at it, you know, the next, our next meeting thereafter. It'll be within the six-month period.
Okay.
Okay? Is that, is that acceptable?
Yeah, you go with that, okay, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
All right, I will second that motion?
Well, there's really no motion.
Oh, there's no motion.
Right now, we're just waiting, we're, we're gonna have the Building Department review the permit to see if it'll be extended six months. If that's the case, the Silveras are gonna go to the state, find out about the two-year extension, whether or not the building, the select board can do it. If not, okay, then...
We'll talk about a refund.
Well, we can talk about the refund, or a partial refund, or something to that effect, and then go from there. But the thing that's, if we extend the six months, you know, there won't be a...
There won't be a refund. There won't be a refund.
So, I do think that, upon review of this document, it does bring up some concerns in multiple departments, but I did wanna ask the Silveras, because alteration types, there wasn't, you went to the Historic Department, because currently on the property is a house that's been there for more than 75 years.
Gentlemen?
I just have a question.
The house is 75 years old?
Yes, it was older than 75 years old.
But the question that I have is, that's why you need, that's what triggered the Historic Commission?
So, there's a couple of things that, that happened here. Number one is the house is not in the Historic District. It's not recognized by the Historic Registrar by the state. And the Town of Dartmouth has a policy that houses over 75 years old have to go to the Historic Commission. Doesn't necessarily favor Mass. General Law, and, 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 it's conflicted.
It's not 75 years old?
It is 75 years old.
But it's conflicted.
But the Historic Commission does that across the entire town, so.
So, so from there...
Police station, it's automatic.
Yeah.
So, so...
It's not historic.
It, it actually, it is in that district, but no problem.
My only question is, so when you went before them, when you went, when you went before them,
Yes.
Saw that you were building in another area of the property, they're aware that then you're going to tear down the 75-year-old building?
Yeah, so what happened with the Historic Commission is, the commissioner, by the Town of Dartmouth's bylaws, is supposed to notify the Historic Commission of a project, and they're supposed to determine within 15, 14 or 15 days, if the project is, if the house is historically significant or not. That does not, that did not happen. Mr. Braga instead made us submit a, an application with the Historic Commission, which we were then placed on a meeting finally after like, almost two months. And we alerted Mr. Braga of the fact that they had blown past the timelines, and of the fact that the Town of Dartmouth had the right to, I mean, and that he had the right to advance our permit, and he still told us that we should go to the Historic Meeting regardless, and get the, the sign-off from them. So we went to that meeting, we presented that the house was going to be torn down, we presented the new house that was going to be built on the lot, and there was really no opposition, they just had some questions for us, and it was a formality that took about two months to get through.
Okay, my only thing is, then you're gonna have to go back and pay a demolition permit?
We already, we already did that. There's, there's already, there's a demolition permit for the house that's open, which is also gonna have to get extended, and there's a building permit for this house that... Actually, yeah, I don't think Mr. Braga ended up issuing that demolition permit.
I don't see it anywhere listed.
Yeah, because he was...
Well, just don't forget.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I don't think you want two houses on that property.
Anybody have any other comments?
No.
The fellows, are we straight on what the procedure is, where we're going?
Yeah, I mean, really, the, the, the only other idea here would be that if we choose to let this permit lapse, to be refunded the amount, which would be passed down to the, to the client, rather than them, than them having to reimburse us, to the client, rather than them, than them having to reimburse us, the town reimburse us, because they would have a permit that's no longer valid. So that way, we don't have to keep calling back and having the same conversation with you guys.
So there's a chance in the next two weeks, you might decide to let it lapse?
Well, no, what I'm-
I would say if you let the permit lapse, let us know, and then we can take up the issue on the refund.
I think, yeah.
So, so I, I'm just trying to save, like, all this back and forth and having to come back here again and elongate this process though. So I think the best thing to do tonight is just make a motion for, to, if, if we decide to let the permit lapse, whether it's in two weeks or in two years, whatever the state allows us to keep continuing the permit, at that point in time, we would just be reimbursed, because the town recognizes what occurred. Because you're, you're, everyone's saying the same thing.
Right.
Why convolute this and-
But I, I think there's a, there's a, we, I think at this point in time, if you decide to, to extend the permit, okay, then you, you extend the permit, that's, that's it. If the permit lapses, then we can take up the issue of the refund.
Correct, exactly, so if we extend the permit-
But I don't wanna, I don't wanna do, I don't wanna make a motion based upon if you decide. I wanna make a motion because you decided. You know what I mean? I, I, it's really, it's really hard to make a motion based upon what you may or may not do.
All right, and I'll keep it simple, one last comment. It seems that the town's inclined to issue a refund, it seems, I'm getting the impression that the town is inclined to issue a refund-
I can tell you this, David, I wanna give you the, I wanna give you the refund based upon a lapsed permit.
Exactly, so I, I'm getting the impression the town's inclined to issue a perm, a refund if, if we decide to lapse the permit, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, and, and not inclined to, to issue a refund if we choose to keep extending it or build the house, right? So this is very black and white right here, so I would suggest a motion for that. So if we choose to lapse it-
But I, I can't make a motion on whether or not you decide to make, I can make the motion to, to, I mean, if you decide to, if you decide to extend the permit, that's just, that just tells me that you're going to extend the permit. If you let this permit lapse on March 15th and not decide not to extend it, even though you have the request in, that's gonna tell me then you're gonna want the refund.
I, I don't understand.
And then I can, then I can do, then I can make the motion at that time for the refund, not beforehand.
Right, so my problem is, it's taken four months to have this meeting, no, three months to get here to this meeting today. We sent the request to be on the select board agenda three months ago. So if we choose now to let a permit lapse after six months, is it gonna take another three months to be placed on an agenda to get our money back from the town? That's my concern.
If you, if March 15th comes in, and you do not, you do not extend the permit-
Right.
Our next meeting is March 25th, I will make the motion to refund you that money, then, right there, two weeks.
Okay.
Or 10 days, from the time you decide to lapse the permit.
Okay.
So the main question to me is, again, let's clarify, who paid for the permit?
The applicant, which is us, South Coast and Associates.
Right, they paid for the permit.
With the homeowner.
Nothing to do with the homeowner.
Okay.
So is there a, is there a chance between now and the 15th, you may decide to let it lapse? Is, or, I thought you were asking us to go to the billing department and extend the-
We, we were, but like, again, I don't think that's a realistic request, we're kinda noticing that in, in, in the requests. It's, it's our job as the applicant with the state and the commissioner to request an extension. It's not, I, I don't believe it's the, the select boards-
Requested it though, right?
Through the billing department, correct, which we're waiting.
And we're looking to see-
Right.
And have the building department look at it and review it.
I'm just trying to make everyone's life easier here, because basically saying if we go, if we go path-
My life would be easier, my life would be easier if, I want one request, my understanding is your request is to extend the permit for six months tomorrow morning.
I'm not requi, I'm requesting the town, the town to issue a refund on the building permit if, if we decide to let the permit lapse. It's just path A or path B.
What we're saying now, that's not what we're doing. My understanding is that if you're gonna, what do you want for tonight? You want extension for six months, or you're gonna let it lapse, one or the other?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
We, we want a commitment from the town that says-
You have put in a request to extend the permit, correct?
Yes.
Okay, you're waiting to hear on that status, correct?
Correct.
Okay, Mr. McGinnis is, Mr. McGinnis, Mr. McGinnis is going to call or walk down to the building department to find out the status of that request.
Okay.
And to ask them to act upon that request.
Right.
We will get an email before March 15th as to that request.
Yes.
At the same time, if that request is granted, then that'll go to the Silveras or South Coast to say, your request has been granted, and now they've got the permit for another six months, okay? If their request is denied, we will get an email saying that it's been denied.
Mm-hmm.
And then on the 25th, we can act upon the refund.
Oh, right.
If they, if they are granted the permit, extension, and then they say, we no, we no longer, we're gonna withdraw the extension, then it becomes, then it becomes, I will say that we refund them the 5824 based upon the lapsed permit. I will not say to give them the refund on an existing permit, on a valid permit, it'll have to be a lapsed permit.
Exactly what I'm saying, so I'm just, I'm just suggesting a motion that, that the town is committing, is that it's committing to that.
Yeah, David, I don't do motions on-
You're not gonna do that.
Maybes, you know what I mean? Because I don't know if you're going to let it lapse or not. If you tell me tonight that you're going to let the permit lapse-
Right, that's my point.
Whatever, that's, that's fine.
You know what I mean?
Thought you could just say, hey, path, if they go path A, this happens, or they go path B, this happens. That's it, there's no other gray area.
It's, it's-
And, and that's the mo, that's the commitment from the town, but if, if you wanna go through all that and come back again and all that, that's up to you. I'm just trying to make it very simple for, for tonight.
Sometimes, sometimes simple is not the best, is not the way of doing things.
Something you wanna say?
Yes. I still, at my, at my point earlier, we need to get the town attorney involved in this and let him, okay, everything we wanna do.
That's up to you, yeah.
Okay.
We'll just get a second opinion from you.
Last minute, you say you didn't say this, I wanna be upfront with you.
It's all recorded, I mean, you have the right to ask the town attorney to be-
Listen, I don't care. I, I'm looking at you guys and to your face, I wanna make sure you understand what I'm saying.
Okay.
Just don't send me a bill.
No, I wouldn't send you a bill.
Any other questions or comments, are we done for now?
I have no questions or comments for the Silveras, but I do have a, a statement about some other information that we received in our packet relative to the building department.
Okay, well, let's finish up with them.
So I'm all set with them.
This, this, all right, this man there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
So I feel that this, the whole thing was very enlightening, but in the packet, we received an email which we had received earlier in November from an architect that does work in the town, that had a number of bullet points of various projects, and I hope everyone on this board read them, because I think this speaks to going forward, and I was informed that we had successful interviews for a potentially new building commissioner. Going forward, that we will honor having a discussion of the processes and procedures in the building department. One, so that we're not looking at these timelines, but specifically listed in here about a rain-water management plan. I found that to be very interesting, and for the exemption listed that a waiver could be granted for projects involving less than 5,000 square feet of land disturbance, that the fee would be waived. And I'm looking at a concern that I have, if this was included in this project on Smithneck Road, I know it's a small amount of $50, but were they, were, were projects charged that should not have been charged?
Well, we don't, we don't know anything about that, and as far as the rain-water management part is, I think that's, that's an offshoot of what Westport does, because Westport has it, and, you know, they're requiring people to put basically, you know, French drains in to, to, to maintain the water in the ground, keep, put it back into the ground to recharge. So I don't know if the town has that, and if they do, then it's gotta be upfront, you know, so-
I think that this board has made-
But I can tell you this, as long as I'm sitting on this board, we made a promise that we would have a focus group. Once the new building commissioner comes in, it will happen. Know if and so buts about it, it will happen.
We all agree with that, Sean.
We agree with it, that's my point.
So no need to beat a dead horse.
Thank you.
All right.
We all know the engineer that wrote that, that-
They'll have it in our packet.
Yeah, well, I saw it earlier.
Okay. Very good. Ready to move on?
Uh, yeah, I need to set up.
We are now moving on to the, here's a nice, happy subject.
Yeah.
Employee health insurance proposal presentation.
So while he's setting up-
Yes.
Shall we, I, I'm gonna take this, if you don't mind, Sean, I'll take a minute to do a select board update while you have to set up. So I'm, I'm just gonna state my select board update.
Okay.
All right, I'm just gonna jump to that.
While Sean's getting ready, Mrs. Brooks?
Just gonna do a little tap dance while Sean's setting up.
Want some music, dog and pony, is anything?
Yes, a little dog and pony. So I just wanted to give a shout out, last week, we had our election, which was the primary election, and I met with Sarah Haskell Ruda after to just talk about how it went. I work one of the polling stations, and I wanted her to know she's implemented some changes on how we take paper, you know, how we do some paperwork, so I just wanted to see how that went, et cetera. One of the biggest concerns we had the day of election with a number of people who showed up at various polling places, that would talk to the person taking their information and say, I never registered for that party, I should be this party, or independent. So I just wanted to let everybody know that the state mailed every registered voter a trifle, and I meant to bring a blank trifle in. This is what it looked like when it was filled in, this is the front, but it was a three-phase, and it had a listing of when all the elections were, it lists right on your ballot, it says, you are enrolled in the blank party. So the people that showed up and said, that's not the party I'm enrolled in, would have gotten this trifle. This trifle was to be completed and returned if you wanted to have the ballots mailed to you. You cannot change your party on this form, and some people wrote that in. This just says, yes, I want to receive the ballots mailed to me, and I'll mail it back. And I, you could pick the presidential primary, the state primary in, on September 3rd, the state election, November 5th, or a box that said, all 2024 elections. This card is not applicable to the, because if you checked all 2024 elections, you would also be in, in line to get a mailing about the town election in April. If you did not submit this, you will not get a mailing with your election ballot. The state will send out something, again, probably in August, about the September and November ballot. Again, it will say on there what is the party that you have signed up for. If you don't wanna be the party that it says on that form, or that you were assigned at the, at the last election, you had to take the Republican, the Democratic, or the Libertarian ballot, because that's what you were signed up for, then you can come to the town hall and get this registration card, or download it on the state website and send it in, and it will change, they will then change your party. There is a card like this on every, on all of us, when we change the party, they keep the sign, and they would stick, oh, Heidi Brooks was a this, and now she's a that. Also, there are some folks that maybe we don't have a card on, because when they got their first license, became a licensed driver, the DMV now asks you to register as, to, to vote, and asks if you wanna pick a party. And if a 16-year-old who's just getting their first driver's license does that, then they are already registered to vote. So-
But you know, excuse me, the changes that people are not, are not familiar with, at some point, somewhere down the line, they took a ballot out and declared that whatever it be.
Yes.
And they might have forgotten, it was a while, while ago, and it stays there until you physically change it.
Right, and, and now, that doesn't happen.
No, what happens now is that at some point in time, years, about maybe, about maybe 15 years ago or so, you took out, you took out, if you were unenrolled or an independent, you took out a Democratic Party, you had to declare, you had to right then and there, or at some point in time thereafter, to go back and say, now I wanna become back an independent voter or unenrolled. Now, as an unenrolled voter, like me, walks in, grabs a Democratic or a Republican Party, I make the, I make the ballot, I'm still unenrolled.
Unenrolled, correct.
I, I do not get the, the D or the R in the end of my name.
Correct.
So, I, at some point in time, there are some people who, who felt, because you have the three, the three primaries, okay, that they went in and, there was a, there was a big thing about Democratic voters voting in the Republican primary to basically, you know, screw that up, and vice versa on the other end. So there was some, there were some Democrats, people who were labeled, who had the D on their name, wanted to vote in the, in the Republican primary, and they couldn't-
Right.
-because they had a Democratic.
Right.
I had a conversation with somebody about this, and he didn't realize it at the time, but now he's, you know, they will-
So anyone that had that issue in March, they can come in now-
They can come to the town clerk's office and unenroll.
And do this, the, change their registration. If they're not listening tonight, and in August they get this paper, it says right on here what your party is, and if, because at the state primary on September 3rd, you'll be choosing a ballot then again.
Again, because it is-
In November, it's, everybody's on one ballot.
Right.
Correct.
There's no choice. And the only other problem, the only other problem is that with the mail-in ballots, the requests go into the state, I mailed my mother-in-laws, and I mailed my wife at the exact same time in the same box, and only my mother-in-law got her mail-in ballot, my wife did not, so-
So if she's unenrolled, I don't know.
We can't, no, 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 it doesn't make a difference, that problem, that problem is not the town clerk's problem, that problem is the US Postal Service problem, because to be honest with you, they speak lately.
There was, there was some problems on the unenrolled, if you are unenrolled, you have to declare your party when you send it in, so that they can send you the correct ballot, and some people did not declare a party. So I don't know if that's her case, but I'm just telling you that was-
Thank you.
Ask you what ballot you want.
I just wanna do a little PSA.
Thank you, Mrs. Brooks.
And I'm done. I hope I gave you enough time. Okay.
Mr. McGinnis?
I wanted to talk to the board tonight about some health insurance, it's a big topic of discussion, particularly with collective bargaining, but also with the staff in general, and we've talked about this many times, the board's cognizant of the costs associated with health insurance for the employees, both from the employee's perspective, but also, you know, we talk a lot about recruitment and retention of good employees, we wanna maintain good employees here, and part of that is having health insurance costs that are reasonable for the employee. So I'm gonna go over an analysis we're done and some proposed plan changes that we're proposing for FY '25. On the agenda, I'll go over this quickly, but we're gonna cover our current insurance, health rates, historical annual increase rates for our health insurance, our HMO plan versus our high deductible health plan, the high deductible health plan, the actual employee deductible payments that have, that have been made, to review changing the HMO plan from 5644, which it currently is, to 6040 or 7525. Also with our high deductible health plan, looking at changing the contribution rate from 6040 currently to 6535 or 7030. And also at the end, just to kinda compare everything, and what we've done to do an analysis of all our health costs in general. First off, just our current health insurance rates, these are monthly rates, and you can see I've highlighted the employee monthly contribution, because this is what we're really focused on, for the HMO individual and family plan, and also the high deductible individual and family plan, and you can see, the town currently contributes 25% to those employees on the high deductible plan to their health savings account to help offset the costs of their deductible. Our current enrollment is 380 employees on the HMO plan and 51 employees on the high Uh, our current enrollment is, uh, 380 employees on the HMO plan and 51 employees on the high deductible health plan. Uh, our health insurance rate increases. So, uh, I, this is a great table to elicit the cost of health insurance, and we all know that, but this really bears it out. And you can see it from FY '17. Uh, our increase from the year before was 8.73%, and it went up a lot, up to FY '19, to 12.6%. Now FY '20, '21, and '22, that was COVID, people were using health insurance less, uh, so you could really see the deduction went down. Now, as we come out of COVID, last year FY '24, our rate increase was 5.73%, and we've been told this year for FY '25, the rate increase is gonna be 8.45%. So you can see the trend is going back to FY '17, '18, and '19 from, uh, the low of COVID. And the average, if you take this across these, the average, average annual increase is 6%. So it's a significant increase every year for both the town and the employee to absorb these costs for health insurance. Now, why do the health, why does the health insurance go up, people ask? It's not just arbitrary on the health insurance. Uh, the town has a high utilization rate, which means the employees are using the health insurance. When they use the health insurance, we have to cover the cost, so that's why it goes up. When we compare our current HMO plan versus the high deductible plan, uh, this table kind of bears this out. Uh, you can see on the left-hand side, uh, the HMO, the, uh, individual, the employee annual cost for the individual plans, about $6,000. The family plan costs about almost $15,000. Now you can see on the high deductible plan, uh, the individual's $4,600 and the family plan's $11,500. Uh, the employee deductible for those, uh, the whole plan is $2,000 for individual, $4,000 for the family. The town contributes 25% of those, so 500 or 1,000. So in a nutshell, when you look to the right on the colored columns, um, is, this show the employee savings for the high deductible plan over the HMO plan. Now, with the exception of an individual, um, on the H, on the high deductible plan that uses their full deductible, they're actually paying 120, almost $115 more than if they were on the HMO plan. Aside from that, um, a family that's on the high deductible plan that uses 100% of their deductible is still paying $420 less than if they were on the HMO plan. If they use 50% of their deductible, they're paying $2,420 less than if they're on the HMO plan. And if they don't use any of the deductible on a family plan, they'd be saving $4,042 a year over the current HMO plan. Now, if I have, you can see on the bottom, these plans are exactly the same. There's no difference in the plans, uh, the services that are provided, it's really just how the services are paid for. So it's interesting to note, and that this is what we have set up currently. We really try to encourage staff and new employees and existing employees to go on the high deductible plan, because it is a savings for the employee for the same plan. But on the high deductible plan, a lot of people think just, they just assume, well, if the deductible's $4,000 for my family, I'm gonna have to pay $4,000. Well, we wondered about that. So we went back and asked our insurance provider for the, um, amount of money, the average amount of money the employee's paying towards their deductible. In 2020, the employee was paying on average about 43% of their deductible cost, which equated to, for a family, $1,758. So the average employee's paying $1,700 of that $4,000 total deductible. In 2021, you know, as you saw on our rates going up, we were coming out of COVID, so the average deductible was about 50%. So the employee was paying for the family plan about $2,000 out of pocket for their deductible. Now, the town was contributing $1,000 to that, the 25%. So their out-of-pocket costs, the average employee, to pay for that deductible is about $1,000 a year. So they're really saving significantly, because if you remember from the last slide, uh, employees on the family plan that use 50% of their deductible are saving $2,200 over. Um, and that's using 50% of the deductible, so a significant savings. Uh, so this just, our, elicits that, on average, people aren't paying 100% of their deductible. Some people are, and we are cognizant of that. Some people are paying nothing for their deductible, so, uh, and they save even more. Now we look at, well, we get this a lot, we wanna change the HMO plan from 5644, which it currently is. The town pays 56%, the employee pays 44, to 6040. And you can see, we run these numbers on the existing staff that we have, uh, for the existing plan. And if we were go to 5644 to 6040, uh, the individual would save $545 per year. A family would save $1,357 per year. So there is a savings there. The cost for the town to go to 6040 would be about $1.7 million. And we're assuming a 30% increase in enrollment, which I think we would see if we were at, at 6040. So for the savings for the employee, it's, it's a savings, but it's really not that significant. But the cost of the town is, is very significant, and it's just not affordable without possibly an override or a major budget cut somewhere else. On top of that, when we look at the employees' savings, so currently in the left column in FY, uh, '24, the employee pay, uh, the individual pays $6,000 per year, you saw this, and the family pays 14,900. FY '25, there'd be a 6% increase on average. So it already goes up to 14,389. And then by FY '26, two years later, they're paying $15,253. So within two years, they've already eaten up any savings they have, just on what we anticipate will be a 6% increase on average. Now, it could be more in those, those years. So I know a lot of times the employees wanna say, "Well, go to 6040, it's gonna be a savings, it'll be a better plan." It really isn't, because any savings gained is gone within two years. When we look at, for the town to go to 7525, uh, for a split with the employees, uh, we, we would assume, like, we'd get an increase in enrollment of about 50%, and that would cost about $4.5 million. Like, it's just completely unaffordable right now for the town. So we really wanna focus on providing the best health insurance plan we can for the employees and getting them the lowest cost possible to them. So we wanna look at the high deductible plan, and currently, like, as I mentioned, it's 6040, and we, we're, wanted to do an analysis. Well, what if we changed that to 6535? And instead of paying just 25% of the employee's deductible, we would pay 50% of the employee's deductible costs. So that would mean that, that the town would be paying $1,000 for an individual, or, and $2,000 that we would be putting into a, a health savings account for the employee. I'll stick with the family on the individual plan, that the, the individual's savings is significant, too. If an employee is, if we implement this plan, 6535, an employee uses 100% of their deductible. They spend the whole $4,000, which the town has given them $2,000, so they're really paying $2,000 more. They're saving $2,800 over the existing HMO plan. That's using 100% of the deductible. Now you saw on the analysis that generally they use 50% of the deductible. Well, a family that's on the high deductible plan at this rate and uses 50% of the deductible saves $4,800 over the current HMO plan. If a family doesn't use any of their deductible for a year, they save $6,800. Now I know that for a family, that might not be realistic, but certainly for an individual, it's realistic to not use, um, to any of their deductible. And an individual that didn't use their deductible would save $3,000 over the cost of an HMO plan. It's almost half the cost. So that's option one. Now, when we look at this, well, what would be the cost of the town? Well, to go from, to 6535, it would cost the town about $331,000, which is a significant cost, but not a $1.7 million cost. Now this cost assumes a 100% increase in our, on employees in the high deductible plan, and a 10% reduction in HMO users. And the reason we're able to lower this cost for the town is by reducing the HMO users. There's such a save, there's a huge savings to the employee, but there's also a significant savings to the town to have employees on the high deductible plan. Option number two. So we said, "Well, what can we do to really maximize this? Why don't we look at 7030 for the high deductible plan, in, in addition to paying 50% of the employee's deductible?" I'll just get down to the bottom numbers, but you can see the savings is like, is really significant. 4,300, 6,200, 8,200. Um, so when we look at that, we're saying, "Well, this is a great savings." You know, what is it gonna cost the town? We're estimating, assuming 100% increase in the high deductible enrollment, and a 10% reduction in HMO users, it was cost the town about, uh, $426,000. So that's a significant cost, but we still think we can make that happen, and I think it would be a great benefit to the employees. It would work out for the town in the long run. So when we look at that, now we wanna compare all the plans together. So I know I've gone over the, on the left-hand side, changing the current HMO to 6040. You can see the savings, 545, 13, uh, 57, but the cost of the town, 1.7 million. In the center, this is the 6535 high deductible with the 50%. You can see those savings for the family from 2,800 to 6,800, the cost, 331,000. And then to 7030 for the 50%, 4,300 savings to over 8,200, uh, and a cost of the town of about $426,000. So when we look at this, we say, "Well, we think we can afford to go to 7030 with the 50%." How can we do that? Well, it helped that this year the school maintained their 3% increase in the budget. So not seeking a 4.5% increase, but staying within the 3, 3%, and, like you saw in my other budget presentations, the rest of the town, we try to maintain for all the departments, a 2.5% increase. With the school, we understand their cost increases, so we do 3%. And this year they've been able to, to bridge that gap with some of their own funding, so we're able to stay there. Also, uh, our FY '25 new growth, we anticipate that increasing from $600,000 to $800,000. So we're gonna have a $200,000 increase, and this is related to a, a new assessment from work that the utilities have been doing. Everett Source has been out there doing a lot of work, we've all seen that on Route 6. Um, so we anticipate our new growth is gonna increase by at least $200,000. In, in addition to that, you know, moving to these plans or making this change, uh, provides a health insurance budget line item stability. Um, you know, our annual, we annually budget a 10% increase for our health insurance, because we just don't know when we're creating the budget, what, what it's gonna be. If more employees are on the high deductible plan, that results in lower health insurance costs for the, the town, and, uh, and that results in smaller increases annually to our health insurance costs. So if we were to implement this, and we would assume, um, we wouldn't have to budget at 10% every year, we could budget at a 7% increase, um, that would equate to about a $253,000 savings. So just those few things, um, combined together, that, they're not huge, but they do make a big difference, and that certainly covers the cost for the town to go to 7030 on the high deductible plan with the 50% contribution to the deductible. What are some additional benefits to the high deductible plan? You heard me mention this. Uh, but if an employee uses 50% of their deductible for two years, their health savings account would then have enough money to cover a year's worth of their deductible. And that, and then couple that with the town continuing to contribute 50% of the deductible is, is significant. The, the health savings account, where the deductible goes into, uh, is an interest-bearing account, and it can use for future medical expenses even after retirement, and it's tax-free. So it's not, it's, it's, the contributions are pre-tax. When the money's spent, it's not taxed, because, as long as it's related to, uh, health expenses. And you heard me mention this earlier. Employees on the high deductible plan cover a larger portion of their health costs through their deductible. This results in a lower average annual, annual increase of our health insurance rates in general. So it really makes a difference. So it's a savings to the employee, they pick up more of their health costs, and our overall rates aren't going to, up as much. So we wanna try to budget this year for the 7030 with the high deductible plan. We think it's a benefit, a real benefit to our existing employees, but it'll really help us with recruitment and retention, uh, and make us more competitive with other communities.
I like everything I've heard. Especially the fact that you're also going up from the 25% contribution to a 50% contribution.
Exactly, yeah.
It's impressive.
Yeah, it is. But, and, and we've talked about this high deductible for quite a few years now. And it just seems to me, again, that, uh, we need to get the young employees of our town. We need to gather them together before they make decisions and, and educate them about these, this, this high deductible. And it's in their favor, just the numbers alone. They're most likely not gonna get sick, uh, unless they have some pre-existing, uh, issues, but it, the numbers are on their side, and the savings are enormous. And then, and the other thing is, we could maybe attract a few more employees along the way.
Attract and keep, that's ideal.
I think that, um, one of the things that Sean mentioned at our meeting earlier today was that, uh, there is a insurance group.
We have an insurance advisory group.
Advisory group, and it represents all the unions and different groups in town, and, um, we're gonna try to present that to them fairly quickly to get some feedback. Um, I think what, what Sean's done here is taken the high deductible plant, uh, plan and made it so more appealing, uh, by, um, by the 50% increase, uh, going to 50% contribution. It, uh, it's almost, uh, it's, it's almost like you can't pass it up. And it's good for everybody, but there is some risk, but not really, because, uh, it's a dramatic change in what it once was. And, and I will say that, in presenting this to Mr. Kylie in schools, who's, uh, uh, he's an expert at negotiation and knowing what, uh, his staff and people wanna use, um, uh, he was, um, I wanna speak for him, you know, school, or for the school department, but, uh, he was very enthused about this particular plan, because it is so dramatically different and with much more incentive than the previous plans we've had before, which was the, which was the intent of what he tried to do.
Thank you.
What do you need from us, Sean?
Nice job, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we're, uh, we're gonna budget for it, but I just wanted to present it to the board, and then we'll start to, you know, meet with the insurance advisory group and, and start to let, uh, the employees know, this is our plan. Now, it needs to be, the budget needs to be approved at town meeting, but it's just incorporated, you know, the, the costs are just incorporated into the overall health insurance budget line item, so.
Do we, uh, and aside from talking to the advisory, uh, group, uh, some additional education before town meeting? Is this gonna be part of the town meeting, um, presentation? Maybe not?
It'll be part of the budget presentation when we talk about it. We usually mention, uh, changes, uh, significant changes in the budget. Um, so this is something that we would bring up and, and mention, you know, that, not to this detail, but we would certainly, uh, when we, when we do the warrant review, uh, television or recording, uh, this would be part of it. You know, we, I do a budget update to the select board right prior to the town meeting, this would be part of it as well, so.
That last slide, which shows the, uh, the three, uh, not the last slide, but, uh, that, um, that one. That's probably the most revealing, and maybe that could be something to even hand out at town meeting to members? Or maybe you want it to others?
Well, that says it all.
It sure does.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
What do you need from us, anything else, Sean?
Uh, no, that's it. If you had any questions, but I think we're gonna incorporate this into this year's budget.
Absolutely.
Great presentation.
Great, thanks.
Okay. Page one is complete.
Yeah.
Uh, Ms. Brooks, you, you had, uh, oh, we're gonna go to town administrator update. You wanted to take that over now, Sean?
Oh, yeah, I just have a few small updates. Uh, let's see, we continue to prepare the warrant, uh, for town meeting and also, uh, finalizing the, the budget, uh, meeting with the finance committee and capital planning committee, so we should have that finalized soon. Um, Chris Vitale met with the Dart, and, uh, Mr. Tadleblom, you were there today, the Dartmouth Cultural Center Building Committee. Had their kickoff meeting today, and they're planning to do some proposed changes with, uh, grant money that they've been funded through the state and CPC, so I hear that went really well.
It's a passionate group, and they, they do a fantastic job. They really take, they took something from nothing. They made it into a real passionate group, and it's, it's great, really, really good.
Um, our emergency management, uh, director, Tim Sheehan, applied for and received an $8,500 EPMG grant award from FEMA. Uh, this grant is for preparing for all hazards and to obtain the resources required to support FEMA's National Preparedness Goals, Missions, uh, and Core Capabilities. Uh, and the funds are used to support local, uh, emergency management activities. So thank you for, Tim, for applying and receiving that, so hopefully that's good use. Uh, and, uh, Chris Vitale's been working on our dog park construction. Uh, they've signed a contract to create, with a engineering firm to create bid specifications and do the construction administration. And, uh, hopefully in the next few months, the, the bids will be issued and they'll start construction. So it's estimated about $300,000 for the new dog park.
Wow.
And that's all I have.
Only $300,000?
Which is funded, we received a grant for most of it, most of the construction.
Okay.
Town's going to the dogs and the world.
Oh, that's terrible. Take that back.
Say something like that.
God, don't write that down.
Go ahead, print it.
Go ahead, print it. Old business.
Bliss Corner, no new updates right now. Lake Nokachoke, no new updates. Municipal broadband, nothing. And the MassDB Tower 5, no new updates.
Now, we do not have any minutes to approve today?
Uh, no.
Okay. Select board updates. Ms. Brooks, got to jump on that, but where do you want to start?
I'll say one more thing about the primary election. I'd like to give a shout-out to the custodians who assisted Sarah Haskell Aruda setting up. In the past, she's had Bob Mayo for as long as she knows and others, probably about 20 years, and Bob, Rob Mayo finally said, I can't do it anymore. And so, she had two custodians assisting her, Branson and Amir, Bronson and Amir, and they did a great job. So, she wanted to give them a shout-out. I also wanted to just give a shout-out to Dartmouth High School. They hosted TEDx Talks on Friday and it's now, they, DCTV filmed it and it's now uploaded. You can get the link either through YouTube or through any links on the school department website or Facebook. Very interesting. All freshmen through seniors were able to present, probably just under 20 in all, and their topics were so varied, from concerns about the environment to the future of healthcare, prosthetics, just amazing. So, very interesting if you catch that. And as a member of the charter review committee, I wanted to let the select board know that the charter review committee will be submitting, or has submitted eight warrant articles for, finally, I will say, finally. The charter review committee was started in 2020 and just before COVID hit. And through a lot of issues and reiterations, we have worked on this for four years. And we are now at a point where we are going to bring our suggestions to update the warrant to, it'll, the select board will be hearing in great detail in the next few weeks, but it will go to the select, the town meeting and the town meeting members will pass it on, those that they agree with, that they'd like to see passed on to the voters. And that will happen next April. So, in April 2025, we will vote on these potential changes and then they will take effect. One is what they call an omnibus corrections article. We went through and, you know, did grammar checks and typos and, you know, every article had something that we needed to update. Another one is going to be about electronic voting. We feel strongly that before the next time this is looked at, which would be 2030, it's entirely possible that we'll be using electronic voting at town meetings, so there's going to be an article about that. We have, we're proposing to move the board of, to take some action on the board of assessors, the board of health, the board of library trustees, and the historic commission. And those would all be separate articles. Also, some language in the section that deals with the director of public works. And our last one will be on how boards are elected at the town. So, we have a lot of work and we'll be seeing all of that mapped out in the next few weeks.
Lot of work there. Okay. Mr. Mickelson, anything yet?
I'll sit.
Mr. McFadden?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor, please say.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, I hear none. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.